At this time, the meeting will come to order. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance in the moment of silence. My Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America. I agree with your statement. On the mission, on the drive, in this moment, we recognize this.
Mr. Reba, roll call, please.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Fiume.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Kay.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mrs. Garcia.
Here.
Mr. Zola.
Here.
The announcements of executive sessions held as follows. On May 3rd, Executive Budget Meeting, Personnel, Budget Issues. On May 10th, Executive Budget Meeting, Personnel, Budget Issues. May 17th, Executive Budget Meeting, Personnel, Budget Issues. May 19th, Executive Budget Meeting, Self-Funded Healthcare Program and Healthcare Claims. May 26th, Executive Session, Personnel and Litigation. Public announcements and recognition, Mr. or Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. John. I'd like to invite Mr. DiNati to the podium for some recognitions this evening.
Good evening. Tonight, on behalf of the Hazelton Area School District, I have the pleasure of recognizing two faculty members from the Hazelton Academy of Sciences. Ms. Erin DeJoseph and Ms. Rudina Hansick. If you are here, please come forward. Okay. Ms. DeJoseph and Ms. Hansick have been implementing a program to build student confidence, collaboration, accountability, motivation, and problem-solving skills. The ultimate goal for the program is to positively affect student perception of grades, coursework, and their teachers, and to reduce anxiety and anger. The pilot group has met six times over three months in eighty-minute sessions. During these sessions, students engaged in strategies to help build self-awareness, confidence, leadership, and academic ownership. The pilot group was also exposed to guest speakers that offered future insight at the college and workplace levels. That's Ms. DeJoseph and Ms. Hansick from the Hazelton Area Academy of Sciences.
Mr. DiNati, they passed along their regrets as they had conflicts this evening, but they really appreciate the honor, and this is a very prestigious honor for these two faculty members.
Okay. Next, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce and recognize a number of elementary and middle school students that have successfully completed programs throughout the region. First, once again, if you are here, please come forward. Ms. Verena Gad, Mr. Matthew Fisher, and Mr. Ryan Fisher. All of these students are eighth-grade students at the Hazelton Elementary Middle School. The students placed first at the Regional Luzern Intermediate Unit PA Middle School Computer Fair in the Animation category. All students will now go on to state competition at Dickinson College. Mr. Matthew Fisher. Congratulations. And Mr. Ryan. The next group, next I would like to introduce Ms. Brianna Kennedy, Ms. Emily Trelle, and Mr. Matthew Kassadis. Once again, if you're here, please come down. All of these students are fifth-grade students at the Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School. These students, once again, placed first at the Regional K-Nex System Design Competition held at the Luzern Intermediate Unit in Kingston. All students will now go on to the state competition held in Harrisburg, PA. Ms. Brianna Kennedy. And Ms. Emily Trelle. All right. Next, I would like to introduce Mr. Ethan Mariano. Ethan is an eighth-grade student at the Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School. Mr. Mariano was the grand prize winner in the Creative Writing Competition held at the PA Renaissance Fair. Ethan won a cash prize for himself as well as for the Heights Terrace Elementary Middle School Library. Mr. Ethan Mariano. The next group of students are from the Valley Elementary Middle School, currently in eighth grade. First, Ms. Haley Drumheller, Ms. Bryn Gammer, Ms. Ashley John, and Mr. Owen Haslam. Okay. This group won first place in the PA State E-Cyber Mission Competition. E-Cyber Mission is an online STEM competition sponsored by the U.S. Army. The students researched the problem of acid water drainage, specifically at the general tunnel, and experimented to find the substances that could raise the pH of the water. For their efforts, each student received a $1,000 U.S. Savings Bond. So congratulations to Haley Drumheller, Bryn Gammer, Ashley John, and Owen Haslam. Next, I would like to introduce, if you are here, please come down, Mr. Kitrick Danzaisen and Mr. Jaskar Singh. Both of these students are from Valley Elementary Middle School in the seventh grade. They placed first in the Regional PA Middle School Computer Fair in the category of Web Page Design. This qualifies the students to compete in the state competition at Dickinson College. Once again, Kitrick Danzaisen. Jaskar Singh. And last, I would like to introduce Ms. Brandy Naprava. I don't know if she's here. Brandy is a seventh-grade student at the Hazelton Area Virtual Academy. Ms. Naprava placed first in the Regional PA Middle School Computer Fair in the category of Digital Movie. This qualifies Brandy to compete in the state competition at Dickinson College. So congratulations to Ms. Brandy Naprava. And one last recognition, Dr. Butler, is for the students that we brought forward are their teachers. One is Ms. Sharon Sharp, and the other is Ms. Catherine Tombasco. These teachers work with the gifted students on a daily basis, and we continue to see all of these students winning recognition in academic competitions in an ongoing basis. So Ms. Sharon Sharp and Ms. Catherine Tombasco, the gifted teachers. Thank you. Okay. We did have a late student coming to the, Matthew Kassadis.
Thank you, Mr. DiNati.
At this time, we will have public comments on board items only for a minute, for a period of three minutes only. Anyone sign in?
Yes, Mr. President. There are a few people on the list I see that are items not on the agenda, so if I skip you, that's for later. Andrea Decola.
I am here today to speak and express concern about the Hazelton Area High School Cheerleading Program. I'm just looking for insight onto why the position was not filled. I first thought maybe the head coach did not apply. Then I found out that she did. Then I thought maybe we were just waiting for the deadline. It passed. Then I see there is an ad in the paper for only the cheerleading position. So I again asked, maybe she didn't apply. She reapplied. So I am confused. I don't understand. All the other head coaches were reinstated if nobody else applied. So why was this position not filled? Natasha has never been reprimanded for anything by the district. She has taken this school three times in a row, district champions. She is extremely knowledgeable and experienced. I doubt you will find somebody with more experience than her. I am not only speaking as a cheer mom for way too many years, I'm also speaking, I am a cheerleading coordinator for youth cheerleading program. Natasha's dedication goes above and beyond anything I have ever seen. In the last couple of days, I started a petition just to see the support in Hazelton for Natasha in the cheerleading program. In a couple of days, over 500 signatures. So I am just asking, why the position wasn't filled? Why she didn't get her job back like the other positions? Is there a reason we are all missing? And I do have the petition available to hand in if you would like to see it as well.
Please.
Lori Lawson.
Just, please, just a minute. My fault, I should have announced that items number five, thirteen, fourteen, twenty-four, and twenty-five are being removed from the agenda for tonight. My fault, sorry.
Ooh, that was loud. Sorry about that. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. I was wondering, you know, I feel really uncomfortable about airing some of this stuff in public. I've really tried to prevent this because I think everybody, you know, deserves to have some sort of protection when they haven't behaved appropriately. And I've gone, we've, you know, as a group, we've gone through a lot of different methods. I emailed some of you from my own private email, and through another letter was emailed to board members. I'm wondering if you receive them, because I didn't get any notification, no. Do you guys check your emails? Just wondering, because I did this yesterday after the agenda was listed, so I'm super frustrated on how do you get in contact with board members? And that might be an additional comment for another time, but certainly, I think that has to be looked at. So, you know, in an effort to avoid having to do this publicly, I guess that's where I'm at right now. I have a big concern with the hiring of the tennis coach. We've gone through many methods to try to pursue this from all the, starting with the athletic director and moving all the way up. We have bullying incidents, failure to report funds that she did through fundraising, and time and time again, for two years, we've tried to have these addressed, and they, there's been a failure to work with us. We're a small team. She's, you guys have spent thousands of dollars on that tennis court, and we have a whopping ten players on the team, and that's an additional problem, but it really goes to the treatment of those players. Over half of the team is represented with issues, has presented issues that we have with that coach. And Mr. Barletta said at the last board meeting, when asked if there were any concerns with any of the coaches, he said no, and that was not the truth. We have presented to him numerous times about our concerns with him. This is what we wanted to avoid. This is not good for anybody. But the way that the process works, it's unavoidable, but to come in front of everybody and report the concerns that we have, and this isn't the place to do it, but we have our players here that are going to get up and talk about it, and we're going to voice our concerns again to you. This is our last-ditch effort to let you know that we have some big concerns, big legal concerns. And they haven't been addressed, but I'm hoping that you take a look at them today, and you table item twenty-six, please. Thank you.
Stephanie Missurick.
Hello. My name is Stephanie Missurick, and I have played for the Hazelton Area Girls Tennis Team for two seasons now as the first singles player, the number-one player on the team. My experience on this team has been negative, unfortunately, as a result of these coaching issues. It began our very first season when I had encountered these issues at our first practices, which occurred the first, a week before the first practice. It began at the practices, which occurred a week before our very first match. These negative comments progressively got worse, to the point where I dreaded every practice. One of these events included the time that she made comments like, "If you were a smart player, you would do what I say." Her only advice to me was to hit better. That is just one example, and there are many more, which are hopefully addressed. When I addressed the athletic director after taking my fall sports survey in the spring of 2015, my freshman year, I mentioned these issues, but was told that nothing could be done because of her outstanding record after an all-loss season that year. I must include that some of this year's team members, including myself, had had years of prior mentoring, and coach's record this year does not reflect in her actions as a coach. I ask that you please reconsider tabling item, table item twenty-six on the agenda. Thank you.
Adriana Bowman.
Hello. My name is Adriana Bowman, and I am a tenth-grade student at the Hazelton Area Academy of Sciences. I have been on the tennis team for one year. Previous to joining the tennis team, there were speculations about this particular coach's ability. However, I decided I wasn't going to let those rumors influence my decision, so I joined the team. Joining the team showed me that this coach was not at all fit in my eyes for the position. One inappropriate encounter was when she informed us she had a stalker. She brought her brother onto the court telling us it was her stalker. She made us feel completely unsafe and scared. She then told us it was her brother, laughing and tricking us for fun and for her own entertainment. I also witnessed her bullying other players and myself. It is a disappointment to me, my parents, and most of my teammates that she has been asked back to coach on the team. I hope members of the school board will wait before voting on her rehiring and discuss the situation more completely within the players, the parents, before deciding whether to have this coach continue coaching Hazelton's girls tennis team. I'd also like to note that she, every practice, she was thirty minutes late to most, if not all, of the practices, and she would cut the practices short from her other jobs. This coaching position is a commitment, but she cannot commit to it. And I, thank you.
Greg Missurick.
Thank you for your time. I just want to bring up that this coach, the girls tennis coach, did talk to the girls. She brought to the table a very inappropriate topic. I, as a concerned parent, complained, and I can tell you right now, I regret that to this day because there's been nothing but repercussions, and they have been taken out on my daughter, some of them, and it's completely inappropriate. Some of, and these complaints have been filed to Mr. Barletta and through the administration, and some of them have serious concerns. I don't like the bullying. I mean, we're supposed to have a no-bullying tolerance, and I'm telling you, she is bullying some of these players using their power position. I did not like the fact that she pretended there was a stalker. Today's day, when we have all sorts of scenarios, and we're going to think that it's funny to scare girls that there's a predator on the facility and they have, my daughter actually ran for safety. This is not funny. This is not funny at all, and I'm sorry I had to air this publicly. There was another time when I did not have the proper date on a, I'm sorry, the proper team's name, a request to drive her home. Now, all of the other players, if they wanted, she would say, "That's okay. You can go on the, you don't have to go home on the bus. You can drive home. I'll text Mr. Barletta." But for me, my note was not enough. I had the wrong team there. That was okay. After a three-hour match, my daughter was very, very ill. I begged her. My wife begged her, and we begged her, "Look at my daughter. She's going to be sick. She's sick. Look at her." Her comment was, "She has to get on that bus," and she stormed away and left. My daughter needed medical attention. My daughter collapsed two steps off the court and threw up, and you're going to tell me that this is someone that has concern for my daughter? No. Her priorities are in the wrong place. There's a lot of issues here, and I'm sorry that I had to bring this out in a public meeting, but I have gone through the proper channels. I am not just one to run up and shout a false alarm. These are unbelievable, a number of them. I don't have time to go over all of them, but I do want to ask you, as a board, please go over the students' evaluations that were done. Please look at them. Please review what you're doing here. This is, this is an adult that's supposed to be leading children, going in the wrong direction. Thank you for your time.
Janet Kovach.
I only have one question because the rest of the things were tabled. I do have a question on twenty-six. I want to know if all the head varsity coaches for the fall and winter coaches of sports are listed on there, or is there some missing? And if there's some missing, why?
Mr. Barletta? The only one that's missing is cheerleading. I was taken on.
And why was that?
Personal reasons. Antisocial.
Ron Malazo.
Evening. So I'm just going to ask a few questions. I hope you all plan on answering this time around. Being that twenty-four and twenty-five have been removed, does that mean that Policy 123.2 is currently in effect? Anybody?
I can answer, in absence of Mr. President. John, it is in effect, to our knowledge, if the coach has retained evaluations that were recommending satisfactory return.
As presented via that evaluation, or, I'm sorry. As per this, it states, that's only one part of it. If you did this the way you were supposed to do it, as you're saying, that it's now intact again, you guys violated it the last time, correct? When you decided to post all the positions. So if that's the case, then shouldn't all the positions that were reopened, you're in violation of that now?
With all due respect, Mr. President, I would suggest we take comment at this time and not engage in a question and answer.
I'm just asking a question. I'm sorry.
I understand.
Okay. So, going forward, as we see today, you are rehiring current coaches. You are using the policy that is in place?
Again, it's time for public comment, sir. I'm not going to allow the board to engage in a question and answer.
But it's a question that's on the agenda.
And this is the time for public comment, and the board will consider your comment.
Okay. Fair enough.
Dr. Childs.
My name is Bob Childs. I am a resident of Hazel Township. I have, as I indicated on the list, several questions related to agenda items. First, number ten, I'd like to make the comment that I hope that you will hold one of those four schools out as a control school. When I talk about a control, I'm talking about equal staffing, equal facilities. I'm talking about class size being the same. I'm talking about testing being done the same. You need to have a control in this, especially if you're planning to recruit any funds for this type of thing. Somebody's going to take a look and say, "How do you know this? It's the problem with regards to how the teachers are presenting it. How do you know that it's not just the fact that some of the students don't have computers, some of the students don't have internet connections? How do you know that?" Number two item that I wanted to comment on, and this is a question you can answer later on, perhaps, if you would. What is the status of our LPN program? We have two items here that are to talk about the LPN program. My, again, my information is not always current, but I'd heard that we were on probation at the state level. Is that the case? Again, don't spend my time answering that right now. I have other things I need to talk about. Item number forty-nine. What is this approving revised job description and posting for department chairman position? Is the board, once again, looking to take over the job of selecting department chairman? I hope not. Again, after this debacle with the coaches, I'm just suspicious. So again, if you can address that when you get to it, I'd appreciate it. And then finally, number twenty-six. I hope everybody on the board is satisfied with what you've accomplished. You've managed to make the coaches paranoid, and I've heard that from very close sources, to the point where they're not, some of them are concerned as to whether they really want to be coaches in this district, period. You know, if it can be replaced, not on the basis of merit, not on what you've done for the students, it can be replaced on the basis of who's friend of whom, who's upset with whom about not playing my son or my daughter, whatever. No coach wants to labor under that, and I think you've opened a real heavy-duty can of worms. You're going a step further than that, though, and you've left parents asking the questions of whether they want their students to participate, especially when you talk about victimization of students. If you're going to use the word victimization, everybody thinks Jerry Sandusky, and that's not, that's not a pleasant thought. If you're going to use that term, you better define which sports it's in, what you're doing about it. Don't just use the term and then walk away. I hope you, I hope you come along with doing better with other things than you've done with this particular, with this particular debacle, to use the same term again. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I can, I don't want to, I know we shouldn't engage, but I do want to just address that, and I'll state this, and I don't care who says what. I have the absolute most highest regard and respect for Dr. Childs. He knows that. I consider him a personal friend, and I, my, my respect for him is beyond words. I use the word victimized, Doc. I served with you for six years. You and I, I think, championed the bully policy. I mean, you more so than mine. What I heard in executive session was nothing less than a child being victimized, okay, through bullying, and ongoing bullying. It was, it was hard for me to hear it. It was hard for me to see the pain in the father's eyes, and that's what I, and that's why I stayed at that through the phone. I also, Doc, and I'll address everybody, just days after that, Doc, it was public knowledge, on the front of the paper, a despicable act was committed by one of our coaches. I'm not sure if it raises to the level of victimized, but certainly raises to the level of possibly criminal. Okay? And you seen it, I heard it. Then we move a little bit further along to tonight, okay? We have some very, very, very courageous young women that get up here and speak. None of us had heard about what was spoken, and I'm sure there should be an opportunity for the coach to defend, but these young ladies and their families got up on that, and I would disagree that this is probably where it should happen, and I know how tough it is. I could only imagine how tough it was. But you heard last- But you heard last time all the support for the coaches with very little opposition, but tonight we did hear that. This board was not privy to anything that was just said to us at all, Doc. So I made the, I stated victimized. I stand by that word because bullying is being victim. And you know that, I know that, our educators know that. We've got to stop that. And it went on, and it went on, and it went on, until, thank goodness, a coach stood up and said, "Enough." So I used that word and I, I thank these people for speaking out, and I thank you for speaking out, Doc, but I would have to disagree that what we did on number 26 was, was needed. And it's a shame, but it got everybody talking and hopefully for the right reasons. I know for, for sure that I learned something tonight I didn't know prior to the last board meeting. So thank you.
Mr. John, I'd like to just, you know, make a comment to Dr. Childs about that. No, no coach should be looking over their shoulder. They're not doing anything wrong. If they're, they're doing their job and they're watching out for our students, then no one has to look over their shoulder. I mean, it's a simple process. So, you know, what, what this board has uncovered in the last few months since taking these seats opens my eyes, and I'm not sorry that we, that we did what we did. Right, wrong, or indifferent, at this point, we'll have to wait and see. But everyone should know that you're going to be held accountable. If you have a position and you're in response and you are responsible for our students, you are going to be held accountable by this board. So if, if, if they feel that they're afraid to take a position, then you know what? Maybe they shouldn't. You know, I mean, that's, that's just the way I feel about it. There's a lot of good people out there. Some will eventually step in and fill these positions and give our students what they need. It's a tough, it's a tough role being a coach. I don't, I don't envy anyone. It's a lot of hours, tough coach being, band parents and, and all the volunteers in this group. So if they're afraid that this board is going to be looking over their shoulder, well, you know what? Maybe we will be. But it's because of the students, because of the stories like that that you hear, that we just heard for the first time tonight. I didn't hear that from your, from your Dr. Childs. I heard you say that you were, that, that people were not going to be applying for coaching positions because they were afraid that they'd have to be looking over their shoulders. I thought that's what I heard.
Point of order? This isn't a question and answer?
Thank you.
Dr. Childs, I have a great respect for you. You know that. I've known you since my children were born and you've taken care of them, and I would always say that if your child was sick, you would want you in there, and I mean that wholeheartedly. Issue at hand with opening the coaching positions were exactly like this team that came, and we still did not know that, and I'm very sickened over that. We did open the coaching positions because there were issues, and there were children and there were parents who came to us and said, "We have gone through the proper channels. No one's listened to us. We don't have anywhere else to turn." And so instead of picking and choosing which kids we wanted to protect, we blanketed it, we opened it, and we looked at them. And unfortunately, the way the policy is, the same people who are supposed to be giving these recommendations were the ones sitting on the interview committees, and we listened to them again. And I would hope this board would take the kids from the tennis team and their parents, which took great courage to come, because your rights are, your child will be picked on and, and bad things will happen and she will end up probably leaving the team. And that's unfortunate, and I don't want to see that for anyone's child. So I would hope that we would not retain that person on this list until we look into We just had a huge issue with a whole bunch of things at one time. So what, what kids were we going to leave out there? We did this at us a whole because, what, what, were we going to pick one team over the other to protect those kids and say, "Well, now your kids are going to still have to be bullied"? I'm sorry, and I said this to other board members. We have all of these anti-bullying policies for the kids, but we have nothing in place for the adults. And if people do not want to believe it, the adults are bullies also, from the teachers to the administrators to the coaches, and it has to stop.
We need, Dr. Childs, we needed to look at everything. We can't, so it was a blanket, like we said. You don't know what you're going to find, and there's nothing wrong with keeping our employees who are paid by taxpayer dollars on their toes.
Mr. President? Point of order? Mr. President, this is not a question and answer?
Anybody else? Mr. Fiume?
I'm sorry.
No, that's it.
And you're, you're right. I just want to state it because I said it last time on the phone. It somehow became about one person, and I stated my support then and I state my support now. It's never been, people turned it that way, unfortunately. And it was very unfortunate for the, the player, the family, the kids. It was about everything. I mean, I mean, Doc, and again, you sat with us for so many years. It was one meeting after another, an executive session here in these things. And that's when it was, okay, let's look at every position. And you do that by looking at every position. And I, and I heard our wrestling coach say, "You know, I don't agree with this, but I got to respect it." And I've heard other coaches say, "We've got to do that." And, and so the result is, yeah, we're probably bringing a lot of them back, and, and some may not, and, and those that aren't coming back are maybe because we've just heard things that, that we weren't aware of. But it became about one person, and that was so unfair. It was unfair for certain board members because people had this thing that there was some personal agenda driving this, and then it was, again, that somebody had done something wrong, and, and some people had done wrong, but not exactly the person that people were pointing this directive or direction at. So that became very unfortunate. But I do just have to say one last thing. You know, I also need to state, this is not about a failure of our athletic department because what happened several years ago from the action of this board was we took probably one of the best athletic directors, the entire state, and I'll say that without hesitation, and we were going to eliminate that position. We were going to force him into doing something that he didn't want to do or shouldn't have had to do. But five of us stood up and said, "Wait." And at least we were able to retain him on a part-time basis. One of the largest districts in the state, we all know that. We have more teams going all day, every day, and we've eliminated a full-time position and, and we've reduced it to a contractual position. And, and I think that's very, very unfair because some of this probably would not be happening if we had the amount of time that's needed. So the, the failure is on the board. The failure is on the board because we took action to eliminate that, that position. And that was because we were headhunting. That's because we were going after somebody. Now what we're doing is trying to help. And I know that because I've got nothing else in my heart but to try to do the best things for these kids. And again, I thank these girls for standing up there and their family.
There's no one else, Mr. President?
At this time, we'll take a short recess for a executive session. Okay, this time we'll read adjourn. G approved the board minutes for April 28th and May 17th. Mr. Reba, roll call.
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, savviet, motion passes.
H, Treasury report for April 26th.
Second.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
All in favor of approving the Treasury report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, savviet, motion passes.
Yes, we have Brian Bradley here from RBC Capital Markets and Attorney Domgard. If you can keep it short.
I will. I'm going to be very, very brief, I promise, and then I was just going to turn it over. I'm Brian Bradley from RBC Capital Market. I gave you a handout. Just real quick, I just wanted to highlight the transaction. We're looking to refund, update you on the borrowing base. I'll skip the market and I'll just go right to what your current savings look like for the transaction. So just the first page here, I've taken the liberty of highlighting, we're looking to refund the 2008, 2011, and 2013 transactions. Of your 10 bond issues, those three are your highest costing debt. We're up near the call date. The call dates are in 17 and 18. It was a very opportune time to look at refinancing. Just wanted to update you on the borrowing base. 2015 figures are out and, uh... Sorry. Since 2015, figures are out, and you've just made, most of your debt is payable March 1st, so I just wanted to give you an update real quick on the borrowing base. Per the state, you're allowed to borrow 2.2 times, 2.25 times your average of the three past year's revenue, so that equates to about $274 million. Your debt is $108 million, so really you've only utilized 40% of your borrowing base. So from a debt perspective, you have a, a very low debt burden from that, from that metrics. I'll skip over the market. As you guys know probably with your mortgage and everything else, it's a very opportune time to borrow for new projects or refinancing like we're, like we're discussing here. Page four, the part you care about. Based on current rates, the refinancing of those three bond issues together results in present value savings of roughly 1.7 million, which is 6.12%. As a general rule of thumb, I, I've highlighted a couple of things on the page here that I just want to highlight for you. As a general rule of thumb, we like to have 3% savings on an advance or funding. We're currently double that at 6%. The other metrics we look for is negative arbitrage, and we don't want to have negative arbitrage any more, any, any more than one time, any less than one times. You have three times savings to negative arbitrage from the metrics of looking at an advance or funding based on industry standards. It, it's, there's fantastic savings. To give you, in layman's terms, you're paying a 4.3% in aggregate on that 2008, 2011, and 2013 debt. Based on current rates, the rate would be about a 2.52, so you're saving about 1.8% below what you're currently paying. Unless anybody had any questions, I could turn it over to Jens to go over the, the resolution.
And if I may just encourage you to please talk into the microphone so our folks at home can, can hear us. Thank you, Brian.
Absolutely. I'm going to refer to this resolution. I believe it's part of your board packet. The idea in, with the resolution is to authorize all necessary action taken to undertake the refinancing of three bond issues of the district, the 2008, 2011, and 2013 bond issues that were done for various capital projects of the district and are eligible to be refinanced at various times. And therefore, we can issue either one, two, or three bond issues as market conditions dictate. Those, that flexibility is built into this resolution. It sets a minimum savings of at least 3% of the refunded principal to be done, and it then delegates to the administration to work with your investment bank or RBC, RBC Capital Markets to decide on the opportune time to do that, to maximize those savings. So again, it contains all the necessary action for the, for this transaction to take place. The numbers you see here are maximum numbers. The actual numbers will be less in terms of principal amount and interest rate and so forth, but the, the number that's important is the savings target. That's what will drive the transaction. So I'll answer. Any questions?
So this is all relating to number 40 on the agenda. Any questions for Attorney Domgard or Brian Bradley?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. John. Curriculum and instruction approving items 1 through 10 with one...
So moved. Second.
Any questions from the board members?
Just to note, number five is not included in that group.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Reba.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
Numbers 1 through 10, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, savviet, motion passes.
Special education, ESL and alternative education approving items 11, 12...
So moved.
15 and 16.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Items 11 through 16, we're excluding numbers 13 and 14. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, savviet, motion passes.
Nutrition approve items 17 through 19 with one...
So moved. Second.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
On the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, savviet, motion passes.
Security and career center approve items 23, 23 with one...
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 20 through 23, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, savviet, motion passes.
Mr. President, and I am number 26. I'd like to make a motion to amend recommending the board appoint or retain all the following head coaches with the exception of G. I'd like to recommend removing that item and then retaining the following coaches.
I'll second that.
I'm s- I'm sorry. Clarence, I'd like to make a motion to table number 26 because if there's a flaw with the evaluations due to the, due to the athletic director's negligence, then if one is invalid, then there could be an issue with the entire system. And if it's flawed, then if one's invalid, they all need to be invalid.
I second that.
Questions, comments?
We've got a vote on it.
Yeah, there's two different...
Vote on the table first.
On the table?
Table first, yes.
On the motion to table, Mr. Benomo, yes.
Now wait, what, to table the whole thing or just the...
The motion is to table the entirety of that, of that item.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Mr. Chapman, tabling number 26.
No.
Mr. Fiume?
No.
Mrs. Kay?
Yes.
Mr. Mahalik?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Scarsella?
Yes.
Mr. Zola?
No.
Mr. John?
No.
Motion fails, 6-3, the table.
I would ask that we could be able to look at all of the evaluations for all of the positions?
Sure. You mean from the, from the ET's file?
Yes, for all of the positions to make sure that there's no other issues.
Yes, the board has an entitlement to do that.
Any other comments?
Again, Mr. President, if we could go back to my motion, which is to amend 26 in recommending or retaining the following coaches with the exception of number G. Again, the motion would be to remove item G from the list.
And also, Mr. Mahalik, D and J, do we need names?
Yes, and I think our superintendent will provide those.
Okay, thank you. I seconded that, so...
For the record, can we have the names, Doc?
Yes. In order, Joseph Smolinski, cross-country; Mary Kelly, field hockey; Michael Brennan, football; John Burovost, golf; Ryan Scarsella, boys soccer; James Paisley, girls soccer; Carmen Flores, girls volleyball; George Mally, water polo; Mike Joseph, boys basketball; Joe Gavio, girls basketball; Sean Evans, bowling; Michelle Yakubowski, swimming; Keith Maurer, wrestling.
Any questions on number 26?
Mr. President, G is tabled for further review, correct?
Correct.
Do we need to vote on removing G? There's a motion on the table?
I think the motion was to pass that without G.
Okay.
So it's inherent in the motion.
Without G.
Mr. Reba, roll call.
For 26, as presented, Mr. Benomo.
No on D. I was on the Athletic Committee, group interviewed candidates, and Mrs. Scarsella, who's the Chair of the Athletic Committee, sent an email out to everyone. So I'm going on the recommendation of the committee, and I'm suggesting Mr. Baretsky for number D as a golf coach. for number D as a golf coach. And everything else would be just, just as is.
Thank you. Motion on the table, Mr....
I don't think that's a motion.
No, that's just...
That's just point of view. Point, point of order, if you want to change one of the, the names, you'd have to make an amendment. Or we're need, you need to either vote yes or no, how it's presented. So, you could vote yes to all but no on D?
Yes on all but D, no on D.
Mr. Chapman.
Yeah, I got confused there for a second. It's been a long night. What's my name again? No, never mind. Uh, yes, on all of them.
Mr. Fume.
Yes.
Mrs. Kay.
Yes.
Mr. Mahalik.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes on all.
Mrs. Scarsella.
No on D, and I would abstain from E.
Mr. Zola.
Yes.
And Mr. John.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Technology approve items 27 and 28 with one...
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Benomo, or Mr. Reba?
Numbers 27 and 28, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on 27.
No on 27.
No on 27.
Three notes.
Ice habit noting Mr. Benomo, Mr. Mahalik, and Mr. O'Donnell, no vote on 27.
Facilities and capital projects approve items 29 and 30 with one...
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Bobby.
Mr. Reba?
Numbers 29 and 30, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Finance approve items 31 through 38 with one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 31 through 38, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
39 recommend board approve the stop-loss renewal agreement.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
39, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
40 recommend the board adopt the resolution as presented, authorize...
Comments, questions? Mr. Reba?
Number 40, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Number 41, bills.
So, I'll make a motion.
Mr. President, on the question. Did we get a second or 40?
Yep.
No, I, I just didn't hear. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Any questions on the bills? Is there a motion, first of all?
Yes, motion by...
Motion, second B.
Mr. Chapman, second by Mrs. Kay.
Questions? Mr. Reba?
41, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Superintendent's agenda approve items 42 through 50 with one motion.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 42 through 50, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve items 51 through 64.
Second.
Questions?
Uh, Mr. President, I just may thank, and I know we have some more on the list, I just want to stop at this point and thank those people that have given so much of their life to our district. There's especially some paraprofessions on here that I, I worked with and, and I, I just know the importance of what they've done for our kids in our district. I thank them and I, I want to wish them the most wonderful retirement possible. So, thank them on behalf of all of our Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Mahalik. Anyone else? Mr. Benomo, or Mr. Reba?
Numbers 51 through 64, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Items, approve item 65 through 77 with one...
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 65 through 77, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve items 78 through 86.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Mrs. Kay made that motion. Who seconded?
Me.
Numbers 78 through 86, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
New business approve items 1 through 4 with one...
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 1 through 4, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
And approve items 5 through 14.
Second.
Questions, comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 5 through 14, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Who's going to make that?
We have a, a new motion, read, to revoke the approved rental request from Hazelton and Large Ministries.
So moved. Second.
Any public comment on that?
New item? Any public comment on that? Any questions from board members? Mr. Reba?
On a new motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Okay, at this time, anybody from the audience would like to make a comment on any item? Your maximum is three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment on any other item?
No.
No, anything at all?
Anything.
I'm here tonight representing myself, my husband, and my son who has Asperger's Syndrome and just turned 15 yesterday. Also, under the suggestion of McAdoo Coler's principal, Matt Mornell, who told me if I didn't agree with his tactics to go to the school board, I'm happy to call out his bluff. I should be attending my son's final band concert tonight, but instead, I stand before you seeking truthful answers. On Tuesday afternoon, the McAdoo 7th and 8th graders participate in Field Day at McAdoo Little League Field, a playground, which I don't know if the school had board approval on. During this Field Day with the 7th and 8th grade teachers supposedly supervising my son with special needs, had water thrown on him, rocks thrown at him, getting pushed in the face, bending his glasses, and his arm being pulled, resulting in a trip to the ER and a strained shoulder muscle. When my husband and I asked security, chief of school district security, Ed Harry and principal Mornell, where the teachers were during all this, we were told, don't know, doesn't matter, and we aren't going to be told. If the teachers had been doing their job correctly, including emotional support listed in my son's IEP, it shouldn't have escalated to the level it did with our son and the other individual getting suspended. I would like everyone sitting on the board tonight to explain to my son why his safety was disregarded since no teacher witnessed the altercation until a student alerted them. I do believe my husband and I pay tax salaries of the security administrators and teachers, so then why was there no accountability by the teachers and my son and the other student were reprimanded? If properly doing their jobs as a teacher and watching the students, it should have been stopped with the throwing of the water. I was told by Dr. Butler there was adequate supervision. If that's the case, our son wouldn't have been injured and we would be at his last concert this evening. Then again, in McAdoo, the job descriptions and the principal beliefs don't have to follow district policies as we saw numerous times. So, where were the teachers? And why is a special needs kid being punished for defending himself when there were no teachers to do so? Was he wrong to throw rocks back? Yes, but he was defending himself. A three-day suspension because apparently it is at the discretion of the building administrator? I'm sure Americans with disabilities would love to hear the negligent supervision and the events that occurred. As I told Mornell on Friday, thank God my son is done here in a few weeks because after the last few years at McAdoo under his reign, I wouldn't send a dog to that school, especially one with exceptionalities. Maybe at the next in-service day, the teachers and administrators can be taught what the mission statement of our school district is and what autism is. We would like to thank some of the teachers up to and including this year who did understand our son and maybe some of its classes, making them successful by working with us instead of against us. And to those who humiliated him and destroyed our son, shame on you. Thank you for your time. And I would like my son to get an answer as to why that was taken away from him. If the teachers did their job, he should have been at that concert tonight, not missing it.
Thank you, Mrs. Fort. Sorry to hear those, that story. Really am. Sorry, son, should not, should not have happened. Should not have happened to no one.
It should not have happened, but you know, Renee, I mean, we know each other very well. Yeah, but we got along, yeah. But it, there isn't, I, I, I'm not saying there is or there isn't, but you know, we as a board had nothing to do with that. We cannot, I mean, I can't apologize to you for the actions of other people, but obviously, that'll be taken into consideration, what you just said. I know that, Mrs. Fort. I know.
Mrs. Fort, I just want to, to take this opportunity briefly in front of the board to recognize the fact that you and I have had a number of pleasant conversations this year. And it's been a pleasure working with you. And I've assured you that anything that our employees, specifically in this case, our administrator, may, might have said or did say that was disrespectful to you and certainly disrespectful to your son, will be dealt with. On the other hand, we did have a conversation as recent as yesterday and before about this particular incident you're referring to. And I did contact a, who I determined, who I thought was a rather neutral figure in the, in the, what took place. And I did share with you Ms. Koteck, who is a longtime McAdoo resident... Okay, if I, if I could just finish my thought, thank you. That she, in, in, in my discussions, that she felt confident that there was supervision. I know that you disagree, I respect your opinion. I just wanted to let you know, and I think it's important for the board to hear that we have had a number of pleasant interactions years, this year. I am going appreciating to get to know you better. And we certainly want experiences for your son moving forward to be very positive. Well, please, no, Mr. Den... Mr. Denotti and I will look into this further. We thank you for bringing your concerns. And, and, yeah, I think we admitted last night, Ms. Fort, Ms. Fort, not to put out anything in public. I think there was wrongdoing on both of the students' part, you know, as the situation developed. Yes, ma'am, I just, I just wanted the board to hear what, right, I just want the board to hear what we did in fact agree on last night. Thank you. Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Can we just say, Dr. Butler, will you be sitting down with us in reference to this issue?
Absolutely.
And I strongly recommend that, that the board members do read this letter. It's, it's disheartening for me to read this. It's, it's upsetting me now because, you know, if, if children with disabilities don't have somebody fighting for them, then who, who, who do they have? They have vocal parents, and that's it. And some parents don't, don't stand up and they don't, they aren't vocal. And I really want the board to read this letter because it's, it just attacks the, the mission statement that you brought up, that we have in this district. And I, I really do hope that these individuals that she names in this letter are held to the highest degree of accountability because the kids deserve it.
And I would just like to say, I'm sorry. I'm sorry that you had to go through that. And thank you for coming forward because if people don't come forward and stand up for their children, then no one knows what goes on.
I mean, Doc, and, and honestly, I would, at this point, look to Mrs. Januzzi because there are obviously mandates and regulations and procedures that need to be followed. And, and I know, I, I know for certain, I worked in this district as a special education teacher. We absolutely try to adhere to the fullest extent of the law. Again, I, I'm sure, yes, kids with disabilities on occasions can be disciplined. There is a process. I, I would, I would think the process was, you know, in place. I, I don't know. I do have the fullest confidence in our special ed department. I am so sorry to hear this. I know you personally. You know, but, yeah, I mean, Doc, to answer your question that I know Mrs. Januzzi can do a better job at, you can have consequences that may be punitive to students with special needs as long as you are following procedures for them. Those procedures do need to be followed prior, though.
Any walls from the audience? Come on, Mr. Stanzile.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Stanzile, I'm from Foster Township. I think the last hurdle that I'm going to have concerning my daughter is with the mandatory community service. I'd like to speak about community service for a minute. Just taking that phrase at face value, I endorse it. In fact, I practice it. For over 10 years, I live in a rural area, so for over 10 years, I've been taking care of the mailboxes up in the corner, plowing the snow. Across the street, there's the, the fire hydrant, and it gets buried, and I take care of that. No one asks me to do it. The, so, helping out my fellow neighbors, like I said, community service at face value is a good thing, but when you attach the mandatory word to it, that kind of like, doesn't go well with me. I like to bring the word, with the word tax. Sometimes the word tax today is like a spent air freshener. It lasted zing. What is a tax? It's where a portion of your pay every week is considered contraband. You're not allowed to have it. It'll be taken by force if necessary. We're paying so much tax today that about four, conservatively, I would say about four months out of the year, we're working for free. We have to work four months out, the first four months out of the year, we have to work that much time to pay for our taxes. As an analogy, it's like four months out of the year, we're all working in the cotton fields, involuntary servitude. And to me, that's the, that's the comparison I'm trying to make. When you attach the word mandatory to community service, to me, it ends up as involuntary servitude. And then, not to pick on the school board, but then it's like, well, you work... And then, not to pick on the school board, but then it's like, well, you work four months out of the year for free, you might as well, well, why not one more week? Another thirty hours won't hurt. I, my main complaint is what I call the corporatization of society. We're, to me, we're drowning in the sea of bureaucracy, and it's, to me, it's showing its side effects in many ways. So next year, hopefully, my daughter will graduate, I want to address this issue concerning this mandatory community service. I've tried to, like, demonstrate community service to my daughter ever since she was little. I mean, small things even open a door for someone. I mean, even the whole thing about just showing manners out in public is a community service today, I would think. So next year, I want to address more with this mandatory community service. See, I can see if it was voluntary, a child could get, you know, an extra credit or something. My time is up. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion adjourned.
I have this one.
Second.
Any comments from any of the board members? Mr. Mahalik, or Mr. Hume, I think, has something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate and recognize the business office. Last month, they had the report from the Auditor General, and they had a flawless and great report, so, good job done.
Mr. John, if I could have a minute? I would just like to mention, I mentioned it at the committee meetings, I want to thank Mr. Krasinski and Mr. Shemansky for attending. They came to the Fire at the Career Center within minutes of it. They were both off duty at the time, but they came down. They stayed most of the night to make sure that whatever the fire department needed, what the state police needed, they were there to assist. Great job, guys, appreciate it. Congratulations to our, Mr. Krasinski, for your treasurer position. You do a great job, Bobby. You're kind of like the go-to guy all the time for us. And Mrs. Herman, same to you for the fire. You spent a lot of hours there. And the last note I have is, look, the castle looks great. So Eddie, whoever your guys were, you know, we had a discussion at one of our Building and Grounds meeting that things were starting to look a little rundown. I walked around it last night, it looks fantastic. You did a great job. It's a real, it's a pleasure to see the school looking like that. And I know you're working on other schools, Andre, guys, keep it up, good job.
Any other board member? Mr. Benomo, your motion. Have you gone already?
Motion, motion adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.